Attached. These are projects that we have been looking at that would improve essential services to the city and promote development. They would potentially therefore increase revenues that pay for services such as public safety and recreation facilities, as an example. And these things all benefit the residents of the City of Selma. So, there are various projects here that would be a benefit to the community and to our residents. Once we go through the project list, we have an approved project list, would be our recommendation that we meet with our consultants and coordinate how we approach our legislators, the state senator, how we approach our congressperson, and package the projects based upon the availability of certain funding, or what is going on with the state budget in the upcoming year. So, we'd like to go through the project lists with you. If you have any questions, it's here for your consideration. What staff did when they grouped these projects together, we grouped them according to types of projects. So, we have three categories. We have the sewer extension or replacement category, which is category one. Then, on the next page, you see number two, which is interchanges and overpasses. And then, the next category is city facilities. So, within each of those three categories, we ranked the projects based upon their viability to actually come to fruition in the nearer future, and also their economic impact. So, we looked at those things. Now, we'd like your input as to some other, if there are any other thoughts that you have about how these projects might, if we have missed anything, or if you think that you have any questions on the projects. But those are how staff rank the projects. Economic impact and the likelihood of us being able to acquire funding and bring the project to fruition in the nearer, as opposed to much later, future. Because some of these are very long-term, very large-ticket items. Any questions?
So, we had a meeting, Mayor Pro Tem Franco and I had a meeting with the Assistant City Manager and City Manager last Monday to talk about these items. Now, we're bringing it back here. And then, next Monday, Mayor Pro Tem Franco and I are planning a meeting with the consultants to get their input on, you know, what the city could actually get funding for.
Attainable.
You know, what's attainable, and what's actually doable this year, what the state is looking for. And that would be State Senator Hurtado and Assemblyman Joaquin Arambula. Those would be the two offices. So, that's kind of the flow on this, to ultimately meet with those offices to make the pitch with the two consultants.
And Congressman Cox did ask for this list as well, so we will provide them an updated one, once you're all approved.
So, and we did, kind of, that discussion segued into the need for a capital improvement plan, which is definitely a major undertaking, which I think the city really needs to move forward to do. This is kind of an outline of a capital improvement plan. But, I think, you know, to be even more efficient and to have that reference point, that reference material for these offices to see and for our consultants to work on, it would be really valuable to have a capital improvement plan and to go forward with that.
I believe we have that workshop to start the foundations for implementing a capital or creating a capital improvement plan. What's the timeline on those workshops?
The workshop with SKF, is that the workshop you're referring to?
Yeah.
So, we are working on finding a date. We are now looking into later November. And we have been meeting on a regular basis with SKF staff to flesh out the agenda and the materials to share with you.
Because I think it's important that we have a list of projects and so forth, but we really need a citywide, long-term capital improvement plan that addresses the needs of our community, not just the needs of our projects, for lack of better words. We need to make sure that A, B, C, Merced, Logan Street, Park Street, Mitchell Street, you know, North Hill, all those issues and those parts of towns are part of our capital improvement plan. So, that when we're having our consultants go to Sacramento or Washington DC, that they're lobbying for the community. You know, they're just not lobbying for dollars to cross projects off the list. You know, if we do that, we can accomplish both, I believe. But, that plan is so important, and we, as American, we have a lot of needs. So, the sooner we get on that, the better.
I love seeing the actual list and the projects. The only question I had for you is, in regards of staffing for us as a staff, what trigger or what points that you use to, or are you even categorizing? When you categorize these lists, did you take into account our general plan? And is there a recommendation from staff to our council, just like Louis said, for the next 10 to 20 years? I would be more apt to tell our council that we should be looking and telling ourselves together, what is the actual need? Because when I went to Sacramento, I learned that one of the biggest points of question was, it's not so much the projects you're presenting, it's the actual categorizing, the actual need of the project, and what it's going to do for the community. In case in point, what's the bonding base going to do for our community, what the need is in regard to that? When I looked at all these categorized, every one of these projects, I was almost hoping that I would have an Excel worksheet telling me where Selma Grove is at, have they pulled a permit? What is the actual, what's the actual, where they're at, what's the starting date they started? Where are they at in phase with LAVCO, with Fresno County, where are they at with us? What's it going to impact? Where does it fall with the criteria of our sewer? This initial information would actually guide us as a council to be able to livestream and think about for the next 10 years. This is the plan. What I've done in my due diligence in the last five to 10 years, our council has got together and said, hey, this is a project we want, we go fight for it. Well, I would like for our council to start thinking in a broader approach of saying, what is the need of Selma? The need of Selma is our infrastructure. If our infrastructure is costing $8,000, $8 million, and we go back to half of these projects and you look at them, you're going to say that the infrastructure is the first case in need for every one of them. Okay? So, the actual, it's like putting the carriage before the horse. If we go and we say, hey, we want this project, but in reality, does it fall in our staffing needs criteria?
Yeah.
So, that's the question I have for you, as staff members. If you haven't, maybe it's something for the future. Right now, Mr. Mayor, I understand this is a project listing, and it's great, and we need to do that. But, for the future, let's start looking at it as a whole council and saying, hey, you know, for the next five years, this is our point, and have our staff look at it and give us our criteria, based on the actual need. Because the senator will be, if she proposes something, it's going to go up to the House, and the House is going to look at the needs factor, and the factor is going to be falling into the criteria of what's the actual need of our community. And we have a better winning percentage if we go for the actual need. And I would hopefully then start looking at, as staff, together, we start organizing, getting these prioritized and...
Certainly, in that regard. And I think that goes to the capital improvement plan being a very good vehicle to give more ranking, those different criteria. We looked at economic development impacts, and we looked at timing and potential to come to fruition. Those were the two factors here. I think the information we receive from our consultants will help us best approach the senator and the assemblyman, absolutely. But, good points. Thank you.
Teresa, I have a question too. And I'd like to piggyback also on Trujillo's results. With the spreadsheet that I requested, that gives us all the projects that are in the works, that would also tie into some of these projects that you have listed. It'll tell us exactly where they're falling in, because, I mean, just, I know we've all looked at this, and these are very hefty price tags. And honestly, I mean, you're looking at something that's going to cost us $70 million. I mean, that's going to take at least 20 years. I mean, realistically. We've got to look at this as realistic, and when we go out for grants, just like we went in the past, we didn't get what we wanted. So, we have to go back and say, oh, well, now we can't go into this project because we didn't get the funding. So, now we kind of have to jump hoops. So, if we had a spreadsheet of what projects we have coming, or that are in a certain planning, or they've already pulled permits, we know those are priorities, that they're ready to go. So, then we know, okay, this is all the funding that we received, we can kind of say, okay, we've got to allocate some of this for infrastructure, because they're ready to go. So, we're not wasting or taking 10 steps back when we want to take at least two steps forward, you know?
Absolutely. And I think you both mentioned projects. So, a lot of these open up opportunities for development, housing development in particular. If you look at the very first sheet where the sewer infrastructure, we've had a lot of discussions about how, once that infrastructure gets put in place, it really opens up an area for expansion. So, development does have a big impact in funding some of these projects as well, potentially. But, they are very big ticket items, so we are looking for ways to help facilitate that. So, the infrastructure is not all on, or all the burden of the first developer in. So, when we have our workshop with SKF, we'll have an opportunity to talk about that. We've also been looking at projects that might be able to receive infrastructure grant funding. And so, our consultants will be there to help us discuss that as well. And when we talk about affordable housing, we might be able to tap into resources we haven't before.
I was looking at your project listing, and there's actually, I actually categorize them in different other ways, in regards to certain projects that were pertaining to COG, pertaining to different other agencies that are going to be involved. So, you know what? That should fall a little further back. But, that's a good scenario, because we have to actually talk about that, because they did a presentation on that Mountain View. Where are we at on that? That's something to actually think about and say, hey, what have we been doing about that?
And that is...
And that's something we could actually put those projects down, because we know they're going to have, we're going to have a joint powers agreement between agencies that's going to be able to do that. So, that's our crowd. I mean, so that's something we should actually take into account. But, I don't want to minimize the fact that you guys, we are in a good stage in regards to proposing a project. I just want to make sure that we emphasize, I think our infrastructure is really important, and I think that we as a council together need to make a good decision on what we're going to propose.
I think we have to remember that the comment about the spreadsheet and the developers is really important, where these developments are, because it's a roadmap. It shows what the people with the money are looking to invest in, in Selma, and where they are on that. And that's really important, to attract that investment. And, you know, the way to do that is to let, you know, the senator and the assembly member and our funding sources know that's the direction that we're going in, because we do need that public-private partnership. We can't do the $70 million interchange or the $12 million without development at those locations as well, because the two go hand-in-hand. If there's no development there, nothing's going to happen there. But, if there is development there, and there's cost sharing and people paying their fair share, that's what gets these projects done, having the public buy-in on this. And that's what leads to more business. And, you know, you don't neglect the downtown either, is our economic base, and getting people downtown, and making sure that our city is marketable, so that we will attract that, those people saying that our city is worthwhile living in and wanting to come here. And these projects all do feed into that. These are the big ones, definitely. It's just some of these limits, like Councilmember Garrett was saying, are daunting, like the recreation center for $15 million. I mean, you know, those numbers, they can go down. I called the City of Dinuba and spoke to the city clerk, and she said, we got ours done for $3 million bucks.
Yeah.
And you go to the City of Clovis, and they just turned that old cooling facility into a sports gym, you know, a sports complex. When you really want something, you find a way to do it. And that's really, you know, this doesn't look like it's ordered in any set of priorities. It kind of happens where the money's going to come from, and what the community decides. I like that approach, the need-based approach. What is the community telling us they want? What do they want? What benefits each area? Because we've been all about that, you know, finding out about what the community is about. That's our job here, to represent the people and find out what they want in their city. And this is just another tool to do that economically, you know, going, using state money and using federal money to leverage that, always taking into account that they have their goals too, you know, and they send money to the city based on what their goals are, you know. So, if we want water money, maybe they divert it towards a particular kind of water project. So, there's always that interchange. And that's where it's good to have the consultants to tell us what the state and what the federal government's looking for these days.
The way I look at it right now, is we have, right now, if you look at the first five projects, we have Selma Grove. I mean, we understand, that's a project that's going on, on 43. We have the Dinuba Sewer. That's the Golden State, you know. And, so when I look at these five projects, I mean, the one that falls for the needs, to me, would be the inner-city sewer repair, because that could almost become an actual viable report for the one on the Dinuba, which would be the Dinuba Sewer Main. We can actually apply for money there, and we can actually take care of both of them. And that actually would help out the inner city.
And the state's tying that money to housing right now, right? That infill and infrastructure grant? So, that's...
Because we're not in compliance.
The two parts. So, we want to get that money, and they say, yes, but you've got to use it for more housing. And, fine, we get our sewer infrastructure taken care of with that. It helps the commercial that comes up too.
And understanding that she has...
The senator also has the City of Dinuba, the City of Sanger, the City of Parler, and their needs. So, to me, I would look at, and recommend to all of us to look at, what's our actual need? And if our need is the city sewer, would be the $8 million, will we shoot for the $8 million? And if we get half, or without halfway, that comes. Are we coming up with numbers tonight? Are we just presenting this, and then meeting with the consultants, and then bringing it back to council for a more specific game plan with respect to the offices?
What do we think our need is, inner-center sewer? Because that's broad, we could apply...
That's definitely one.
Yep.
Yep. And then, what about economic development? The two go hand-in-hand.
And they're both hand-in-hand.
We need to get in an opportunity zone. Congressman Cox was mentioning that on Saturday, right? We need to be in an opportunity zone, so that we can encourage businesses to come to Selma.
If council is generally fine with the items that are on the list, or if there's things we need to add or take off, we can approve the list and then get the consultant's feedback next week, and then just do a report back, before approaching this.
But, this is a really big list, and we should narrow it down, because then you end up, you're actually watering down the request by sending in 15 requests.
Oh, to clarify, I agree. I don't think we should send this whole list. I think we should meet with the consultants, and with the consultants, narrow it down to see what...
The consultants are going to tell them on this list what they feel is doable.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, we'll do, and then we'll report back after we... With that, we'll move on to item six, consideration of proposal from Surveillance Integration for the installation of a video security system at the City of Selma Maintenance Yard, 1325 Nebraska Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for your time. In closing, your package tonight was a copy of the proposal for surveillance, security surveillance system for the corporate yard at Nebraska and Dockery. I am asking for your consideration, actually, I'm asking for your approval of the system. Just to give you a brief history of what's been going on at the yard in the last six months, we've had a string of thefts, ranging from batteries out of our equipment, our fleet, fuel. We've had a bucket from one of our backhoes stolen. We've had computer parts, or electronic parts taken out of wrecked police cars. The most recent being last week, Monday, we had one of our vehicles broken into, and they took, basically took everything out of the inside of the vehicle, which was cordless drills, saws, hand tools, work benches, materials. PD was actually able to make fore arrests in regards to this incident on Monday. Thank you very much, Myron. And we recovered about 90% of what was taken that day. The following day, they broke into our yard again, cut through our chain link fence, and broke into another vehicle the day after. So, there's obviously a reoccurring problem, and the surveillance company that we're using is Surveillance Integration, which is a company that currently does all the surveillance for the city, for all our parks, streets. It's all monitored at the police station, which is the plan for the system that we put in our yard. It'll be monitored at the police station, and possibly by cellphone for myself. The bottom line is, I'm just trying to protect the assets of the city, my department, our equipment, et cetera. Isaac has helped me put the funding together for this project, and if he has any questions on the funding, he can better answer that. And if you have any other questions about it, I can probably answer them myself.
Okay. Does council have any questions, or Director Farrell? I got a question. So, who's going to monitor this, Shane?
It'll be monitored by the police station.
Okay, PD?
We have the camera server there, and we monitor other sections of the city, as well as our own facility. So, we would have somebody there that could view it. And we, I think, are planning on setting up that if there is motion on those cameras, it'll have a, something that will alert, like a red, something goes red on the camera or the screen, so that you see that, like we have in some of the parks, like when things are moving after dark, or anything like that. Same type of thing would be used there, so that our dispatchers would have something more that would alert them to look at that.
You know, maintenance facility's just growing, and, you know, the fire department training center's going to move over there. I mean, it's really going to expand with that too.
It is. We've got the transit people in our yard now. We've got the art center storage facility. We have fire moving over for their training facility. And we have hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment ourself there, you know, that's being taken advantage of.
Does the public have any input tonight? Okay, with that, we'll bring it back. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make the motion.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Garrett?
Aye.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Avalos?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Franco?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Item seven, consideration of a resolution adopting amended fiscal policies. Finance Director Isaac Brenham.
Mayor, councilmembers, the item we have for you today is basically an item that we've been discussing for quite a few times now. So, we brought this amendment back to you to have a conversation about it. Just to kind of refresh, remember, we kind of started having this conversation back in the budget process. So, now we can kind of go through, I'll give you some of the highlights of what we're looking at. One of the items, basically, the items they have in for you are looking towards pension and addressing those issues, stabilizing some of the reserve policies, and especially internal services and things of that nature. So, one of the key items that I'd point out, if you go through the packet, everything in red is new, or edited in some sense, so you can kind of see where we're going and what we're kind of changing here. So, one of the items, as far as the general fund impact for this fiscal policy, will basically stipulate that our reserve policy will stay the same with a 20%. But, anything over and above the 20% will get directly allocated either to the unfunded liability directly, or the 115 trust. So, basically, what would happen is, once the audit is completed, we'd come back to you with a recommendation on how to utilize those funds the best, okay? Because that just comes back to, what is that dollar amount? What money, how much money do you actually have to work with? So, it's better to come back, have a conversation, allow the financial department to do the assessment. Some of the other items that are all brand-new, pretty much, are section number six. And that's basically coming back, again, to the internal service funds, creating working capital structures, so that they can have a reserve policy. Another edit that you'll see is in item number eight, where you'll see the working capital funds being increased, where, for example, the ambulance fund now has a 90D working capital reserve policy. Some were actually tweaked and actually lessened. Again, coming back to what we're currently doing today, and really assessing what needs to be done, this document is really a working document. You really kind of keep it up to date and really assess it every couple of years, to keep in mind of what's actually happening within the fund. The last one, number 17, is actually brand-new as well. And basically, this is stipulate, something to the extent we just did, during the budget process, we actually make an allocation, or appropriation within the budget, that'll be directly allocated each year to the 115 trust, which we're looking to establish. Is there any questions?
That was going to be the only question I was going to ask you, is if you're going to be bringing it up in the next two years randomly and going back and discussing it, because that's probably what...
It is a working document. It does need to be dusted off and addressed, especially when you're bringing in new funds, like the transit fund and things of that nature. And as these funds change, you really need to come back and reassess it to make sure it's current.
I think this last time this was looked at was, what, 2011 or...
2010.
2010. So, it's time with better economic times, that it was just still in the middle of the recession.
Yeah. I mean, it was really developed to try and stabilize the general fund itself.
And I don't think we want to tie, you know, the city's hands in terms of being able to expand and allocate funds to grow. At the same time, there should be these guidelines that the city council and the city can rely on.
Yeah. Good fiscal policy is really a good backbone for a city, in any municipality.
Pensions are a big deal too.
I think our mind needs to be on pensions, because that's where it's going to be our expense. And we're doing the right thing.
Did the league say anything about the court's status, or the courts getting into pensions? Did they comment?
Oh, well...
They didn't comment on that pension. It's always a big item, but this is important to have this.
They did talk about the, one class, they did talk about the PERS.
Oh, they did talk about PERS?
Yeah. They're always talking about PERS. And nobody's got a quick fix, though.
So, will this...
No, no, no. They did discuss that.
Is two months enough?
Two months.
In your opinion, is it, so it looks like the 15% reserve is for roughly 60 or 90 days of money to keep the city running in the event that an emergency happens, like a disaster?
Correct. So, if revenue streams are not coming in, the county's not issuing us money for some reason, the state's not issuing us money, things of that nature, really gets us through that working flow. Because you'll still continue to receive funds, for example, sales tax, but you'll see that drop when you have an economic turn, and you need to be able to ride through those drops.
What about the extra 5%? That's just for an emergency?
That's emergency only. That policy has not changed.
So, that's 20%, and is that a benchmark?
That is a benchmark.
Among the other cities, 20%?
Yeah, usually you see about 15 to 20.
Okay, all right. And are there any other items that you see in the future, like pensions, that it's on the horizon, they're going to be coming back for money from the cities?
Yeah. It's most likely going to end up dropping again eventually. They are having that conversation of dropping that discount rate again. So, it's something they wanted to do before. They wanted to bring it all the way down to six. So, we'll just keep an eye on it and continue to go.
That makes the next item even more compelling, doesn't it?
Exactly. So, the first part of tonight is really setting the ground game, so that we can be able to get that pension star.
Does the public have any input on the financial policies and guidelines, which make a lot of sense? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Call the roll, please.
Can we have a second?
Councilwoman Avalos.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Avalos?
Aye.
Councilmember Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Franco?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye. Okay. Item number eight, consideration of a resolution authorizing participation in the PARZ Post Employment Benefits Trust Program administered by Public Agency Retirement Services and US Bank, appointing the Assistant City Manager as the City's Plan Administrator, and authorizing the City Manager to execute the documents to implement the program.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Again, this is really going to start off our structure as far as how we're pre-funding. This will be a great tool in our financial toolkit to be able to assess pension needs. Is there any questions?
Just building on what we talked about earlier, you know, CalPERS, 8% of their money is in equities. I mean, how do you expect to have any kind of growth in that? What I like about this is the city can be a little more aggressive, a little, not reckless, but aggressive.
Correct.
And I would imagine the city's going to hire a professional investment manager to oversee where the dollars are going for this 115, to achieve that rate of growth that...
That's correct.
Will probably exceed the discount rate that CalPERS, which is what, 7% right now? Is that their...
They phased all the way into seven.
Seven.
And so, anything under 7%, I mean, as it decreases, that means the city and the employees have to pay more, right?
Means you pay more.
So, whatever we can do to get a better return, and to smooth that fluctuation, I think, is good for the city, and it's good for the citizens, and it's good for the employees too.
I agree.
Anybody else have any input? Any input from the public? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Call the roll, please.
Thank you.
Councilmember Avalos?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Councilmember Garrett?
Aye.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Franco?
Aye.
Okay. That will move on to reports, and we'll start with the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good news, we have hired a code enforcement officer, another one, and they will be starting, he will be starting next week. His name's Juan Mendez, and he used to work with the City of Selma when our last code enforcement officer was out for a while. So, great that he'll be coming back to the City of Selma.
Everybody does.
We're working on schedules. We haven't determined the final schedule as of yet, but...
Will you bring him to council and introduce him?
Yes, we can bring him to council and introduce him.
Great.
Dan has a question.
We're not in oral communications yet. We're not in oral communications yet. Can you just wait, just a couple of minutes?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Okay. On the Community Development Director position, that, we are still in the recruitment phase for that. That closes on November 15. So far, we have received four applications. So far, we have received four applications, resumes, so please get the word out that we are recruiting for the community development director position, and we'd like to see some more applications come in before that closes, so really...
Is the closing date, the 15th?
November 15th, yes. Today, we had the topping off ceremony for the police station project where they raised the last steel beam that will be part of the roof, so that was an important milestone in that project and kind of a fun little event, and thank you for coming out today, mayor and councilmembers, for, for that. The project is moving forward. You'll see a lot more activity as we've gone vertical now. You'll be able to see more of that. We are about 20 working days off schedule, but we feel that we'll be able to bring that back and as we move forward, weather permitting, of course. Also, we sent out the requests for proposals for the website redesign today, so we'll, we'll be looking at that as we move forward. That's it for me.
Police chief search coming along?
Yes. So, with the police chief search, thank you for those of you who participated in stakeholder interviews, and there will be some that, that couldn't make that, that will be doing that over the phone. The brochure for the position, we are reviewing that now and we'll keep you updated, but yes, that is moving forward, so thank you for your support.
Thank you. City Attorney Costanza?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Department of Finance?
Mayor, councilmembers, I would like to go ahead and give you a first quarter update for this year's budget. Again, once, tomorrow, I'll go ahead and send you a copy of the report so you have it for your records, but we'll kind of just go through it. So, you will see a change in this, this quarter's budget from what you see in the past. As requested, the enterprise funds are now a big part of this process, okay? So, we'll look at general fund, Measure S, and the enterprise funds as well. We'll look at budget to actual and some of the key factors that are impacting these funds. So, for the general fund, you have a million, a $16 million budget, so at the first quarter, obviously 24, 25% would be about $4 million. So, again, just to remind you, some of the property taxes and things that year, that year hasn't come in yet, so some of it has to be estimated, okay? So, for the general fund, when you're looking at the revenues, 25% would be $4 million again. We're currently actually at 3.5 with a variance of $438,000. Some of the key factors for the revenue streams are the police operations at 26%, so 1% over and above. The, the department 000 is at 22%, which again is where all our property taxes are, where's all our sales tax are at, so it's a, it's a good benchmark for this year, for the first quarter. That's pretty standard. And then, the building department's actually at 30%, 37% of its budgeted revenues already. General fund, again, $4 million budget at 25%. We're actually at 3.3 with a variance of $618,000, so the total budget received is about 21%. Some of the key factors there are the police administration that currently at 38% of its budgeted amount and recreation at 35%. So, we're pretty much in line where we are, we're supposed to be for the budget. So, this leaves us with a positive net gain of $179,000 as, as far as the first quarter. Is there any questions regarding the general fund? So, moving into Measure S, you've got your revenue stream coming in. At this point, you should be at $456,000. We're currently at $444,000 with a variance of $12,000, so it's about where we were last year as far as our benchmarks and the percentage of coming in. Total expenditures for the budget should be 440. We're currently at 4, or 468 with a variance of $27,000, which brings us to about a net loss of $23,000. We saw a summer trend last year. It's just some of the expenditures are all going to be hit throughout the year, so you're not going to get those big benchmarks of sales tax at the beginning of the fiscal. You'll see it more towards the holidays and things of that nature where your numbers actually start to grow. Again, this is the new part. We will be talking about enterprise funds. This will be now part of all my quarterly updates. So, we'll look at the first one. One item, the item here is the ambulance fund with a budget proposed at this point will be $1 million. We're actually at 1.5. Just so you're aware, though, the IGT actually had to be estimated at 25% of it being received because it's not time for us to receive those funds yet. It's later in the fiscal year, okay? So, budget expenditures, you have, you have budget amount of 810. Your actual is more about 113, or 813 with a variance of $35,000, so you're looking at a positive net gain of almost $700,000 in the ambulance fund. Pioneer Village, budget again, you're not, it's not a large overall budget for the Pioneer Village, so budget's of $11 million. Your actual is about 17 with a variance of $5,000. Budget expenditures is $22,000, actual 16 with a variance of 5. You do see a small loss of 538, but very minimal. Transit, which, which are our new fund, budget for the first quarter about $276,000. Your actual is about 348. I did have to estimate the next two billings because they have not gone out yet. Budget expenditures, $238,000. Your actual is about 276. The main thing when it comes to the budget amount, it will vary because depending on how much parts they purchase and things of that nature, so it's not nothing to alarm you as far as the budget because it all gets billed out anyways.
This is the FCRTA.
That's correct. So, you see a positive net gain of about $108,000. Cultural arts, you do see a budget of $33,000 for, for projected revenues. You're at 38 with a variance of $5,000. Budget expenditures, $39,000. Actual is 69. You do see a net loss of $31,000. At this point, there was a lot of purchase for rights for their, for plays that are going to come on later in the year, though. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
On the ambulances, what are we in terms of monthly, monthly costs? Is it up to $150,000 now?
Monthly costs for...
For the ambulance service?
It's, it's still 120, right?
120.
It's, yeah. It goes up here pretty soon, but it's at 120 right now.
It goes up and then it, does it stop at a certain amount or will it just keep going up?
It's due to go up. You're referring to our contract?
Yeah, yeah.
It's due to go up.
American ambulance.
This next fiscal year. I'm actually not sure what the monthly rate is, but the annual is 1.5.
And we'll be talking to them eventually about adding on potentially a third ambulance, increase service?
Correct. I'll, I, I plan to have a presentation for you at the next council meeting where we can discuss what those options might be.
That'd be great because there's definitely the money in the account.
Absolutely.
Nice, thank you. Any other questions? Any other, any comments by the public? Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead. Stand up here, though.
Is that, is that new lady? Is she a...
My name's Dan Reese. Is that new lady that planner, is she on contract or, or hired employee contract? Okay. And then, the new code enforcement guy, is he the gentleman that was here before, Juan? He's good. Got a good one.
All right, good. Great. Right. Go ahead.
Hossa Costa, Tenshuonimo Street, lifelong resident of Selma. How curiosity is, are all the businesses contributing to the sales tax? Because I'm assuming the sales tax comes to the city, correct?
1% does.
That 1% does?
1% of what you pay.
I was just curious because I had heard some stuff, that's all, but...
It's not even really 1%.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just making sure we're all contributing to the pot, that's all.
Thanks, all right.
That leads to my question. Because I saw three net loss. I want to see all profit gained. I'm a businesswoman. I don't like to see loss.
We'll keep an eye on it.
So, what we could do, I mean, if something that we can do to get those departments where they're going to be profitable, you know, we can help there, that'd be great. So, maybe we can get some ideas going or something.
Again, some of it's, for example, Measure S. You're going to see the smaller amounts in the beginning, and so it's kind of cyclical throughout the year, so you'll have those trends coming in and out of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right. Well, move on. Next department. Public Works?
Mayor, members of council, real quick from Public Works. We're just gearing up for the 55th Annual Band Festival, which is this Saturday. Hope to see you all there. We are moving forward in our hiring process for two maintenance workers. We finished first round of oral board and it was very, very, very promising. Second round is set up for the week after Band Festival, the 29th, and we'll be hiring somebody as soon as possible. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Our chief.
Just a, just more for awareness for council, I, the rest of this week, the weather will be conducive for high fire danger, and you will, may hear reports of PG&E potentially doing another power shut off. We are not in line to have that happen in this area. Fresno County's not on the list at this point, so if you did have any concerns from citizens, if, if, once that does come out in the news, it, it's not due to affect us at this point.
Can we let citizens know that if we are? Can we put it on our website or let people know?
Robo-call for, our robo-call. We can.
That we're going to get our power turned off? Because what, was it three days the last time they turned power off in the Bay Area?
Right. But we're not on, on the, the list of potential counties. It's all up in Northern California at this point.
Okay. Thank you for that. Police Chief Dick.
Pleased to report that the biggest issues we had, and not that they're great, was we had two shots fired, calls, nobody was injured. The one you all heard about from the two boys, both of them were home by Tuesday morning playing video games when the detectives went to talk to the family, so that was very encouraging. In the last two weeks, we've seen a drop of our violent crime, 20% drop with the biggest, the one thing not contributing to that was domestic violence, which is not something that happens out in the public but in our homes, so, other than that, we had a 33% drop in our crime rate over the last two weeks, so that's encouraging as we move out of the summertime and into a little bit more mild weather time, so that's all I have.
Do we have magic? Did they ever come into town?
Yes, they have been in through a couple of times with our person on magic. They tend to, how do I say, flow through more often with somebody being committed to that team.
It's a fringe benefit of having somebody from Selma PD on magic.
Yes, it is.
That's great. All right, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, Parks and Community Services.
Just follow up with Shane. We have seven food booths for this area, so if you're hungry, come on down to the park. They open up around 8:00 and they'll serve till the parade's over. Ringo Park Playground Equipment, we working on it today. It'll take about four to five weeks to get the equipment, and Public Works will start to dismount in about three weeks to save a lot of funds, and it should only take about two weeks to get done, so somewhere in December we're, we're looking at. And good news today, it's, it's just the first step, but we did pass the first step to City of Selma. We are getting a site visit for Prop 68, the Rockwell Park Grant. So, I think that's about 15 to 20% of the grants get a site visit, so it's not a definite, but it is at least a good sign we qualified the second round.
Good. Councilmember Gara, I went to Jackson School and the first thing they said was, when are we getting our park? Pressure's on. Yeah, the word's out. Oh, and on the parade, are we, do we have our slot in the parade yet? Still working on that? 19? Okay.
Was it 19?
All right. And we'll be walking this year. We'll be walking through the parade. So, we'll meet up. What time should we be there? What time should we really be there?
What time?
You can be there at 7:00.
We can place by no later than 9:00.
9:00. Okay, thank you. All right. Bring it back to council. Councilmember Trujillo?
So, I, I attended the Long Beach Conference and it was really great. Had a lot of discussions with a lot of individuals pertaining to the county and the state. This is probably a handful of all the members I spoke with and they gave me their cards and we had a really good, and I thank you for allowing me to go to the, to the conference. There were a lot of crucial decisions being made and I have, I will be doing a report in the near future. I don't want to actually break it down now because of the information, there's so much information. But there was one that was really, caught my eye and it was, I, I started laughing, but then when I started getting involved in this conversation, it became serious, and the question was, is your city website ADA compliance? And I was laughing because you guys are actually talking about your, your website, so it's funny, just, you just killed it, so, but I was laughing and it became, was real serious, so, but for that, I have nothing else to say.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Gara?
Okay. I attended a chamber mixer at RPS, which was a really nice event. I went to be a speaker at Jackson School and they wanted us to talk about city government, so that was really nice. I met with Gary Phillips, who is with Bob Murray, the consultant that is doing the, or is part of the process for the hiring of the new police chief. And then I attended the 7th Annual Country Tejano Bash this Saturday, which was a, a great event, and I missed the ALMS volleyball playoffs today, which I just found out they lost. So, that was it.
Thank you. Councilman Avalos?
Well, I, believe it or not, I was out of town this week with Johnny right there down in Long Beach, but I'll, I'll give another report. I'll do it kind of briefly. And I learned about the housing, the new housing in the state of California and land use development in our community, how to develop future plans, discussion on that, and, and also the new technology and camera surveillance and like new subdivisions to put it in actually poles, and it can like be actually recorded from the police station or your cell phone, and the police are making a new technology there, right? And, you know, in, in the conference, but also they talked about the, the homeless issue, big time through the state of California. It's an issue in itself, and, and also new, something new that I attended a class, I, I wanted to know more information, believe it or not, it was the mayor wanted this canvassing thing for up and down the state. Yeah, and I, and I talked to a couple of the cities that have it, believe it or not, and the revenue's extremely well, very lucrative. I'm not, not to be mean, but it's, you know, but, but I told them, where do you have this item at? I know you can have it in front of the schools, there's criterias on it. They try to keep it outside the town, outside, kind of outside the city limits, but it's in the city limits, but kind of outside, so, but, but that call, they, and it's kind So, but, but that call, and it's kind of bizarre. San Jose, the San Jose, they do have it. I was kind of shocked. I was kind of shocked. And the, and they, they do over twelve million dollars a year. But I mean, but that's just starting. I just, I just starting. But, but the, but the land use housing development from the, we learned that the, the governor has offered two point five billion dollars for the homeless and housing. So we're all seeing this, where's it at? We're all asking, where's the paperwork to apply on it? So, yeah, we're, that's another question. And also, I, during that conference, I came across a person that's going to do our Ringo Park Playground. His name was Chris. And, and he said, say hi, Mike. Okay? Yeah. And he's going to, which is a special need for kids in our community that needs to meet all handicapped kids. And I'm glad that we're, we're working forward to that improvement. And also attended Epi class, sexual harassment certified, and also a TJ Cox Games that Saturday. Me and Franco were here for the Latino presentation for the people in our, in our valley, which was a good event. And it just, just attending all these events is good. And also Bob, I'll be there at eight fifty-nine.
Not seven.
And also, once again, I, but I, once, once again, when I learned about the, honestly guys, when I learned about the sexual harassment class and government officials and supervisors, I learned that as councilpeople ourselves, that we're reflection to our workforce as well, and we're subject to those rules as well. And, and the most important thing out of that meeting was how to represent ourselves with our colleagues, but also with our, our people that work for the city, how we treat her fairly and equally, always be cordial. And I always, that's why I always thank you guys all the time for what's your hard work and everything you do. You know, all the way down from, from the, from the ground up, all the way to the top. I thank you very much. That's all I gotta say.
Mayor Proté Franck.
Give me a minute real quick. I just want to, I want to show you what me and Jim were walking around with every day.
I didn't see it.
This. Thirty pounds.
Yeah. One book at a time.
At least you learn how to be nice.
You know what? One more item. Reyna, thank you for putting this schoolbook together. But you know what? It was honestly, it was very helpful. When I went to my classes, each one of these items were on the screen, word for word, page by page. Believe it or not, I thank you once again, and your staff to help. Thank you. You know, sometimes people behind the scenes are, you don't know what they do, but I thank you. And also TJ Cox, thank you for putting the event down too, okay?
My job is just to make sure that council has all the information in order to understand everything and provide, we want to make sure that we provide everything to you. And you having all the information ahead of time just, I, we believe helps you to understand everything.
Definitely does.
I'm just sorry it was so much information.
Oh, no, no. I, no, I thank you for putting this together. I, you must not have went home until midnight or something, you know?
It's a lot of paper, a lot of work.
I thank you.
You can download it to your phone.
Go ahead, Los. Thank you. Your biceps look bigger. Got a good workout.
Am I ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, there was no five-city meetings because they rescheduled. So I haven't had to report from there. But I was honored to be asked by leadership Selma to participate in their, in one of their sessions about city government. So I did that. I also attended a very heart-moving event here on Saturday, TJ Cox Latino Inspire Awards, first annual. It was packed house, people from all over the valley. And just the stories you hear kind of just let you know that, hey, there's a lot of great people in our valley here and, you know, we're, we have a chance of something special. And just to repeat what Jim said, they thank you, Reyna. TJ Cox, thank you. His staff, thank you. And they thank Teresa for allowing you to use the city. And they said you were extremely helpful for, so thank you for representing the city in that manner. And then I also, in regards to our topping off ceremony that we attended today by the ironworkers, I think that was kind of a neat thing. I actually never heard of that. But I was pleased to meet a young man by the name of Isaiah, and my apologies, Elijah.
Escavel.
Escavel. Isaiah Escavel. He was an apprentice ironworker who got in the program because he lives in Selma, right behind the high school. So he was part of that PLA thing that gets local people, community members, and puts them in a career path. And now he's in front of the line for our ironwork apprenticeship and it started because of our Selma police station. So it's great to see it being built by people from Selma and them in the community benefiting from it. And, and one more thing about these, these League of Councils, I know we've all been to these conferences and they are, there is a lot of, a lot, a lot of knowledge, Teresa. So I'm directing this to you. But they also have, as you well know, you know, conferences for our finance director, our public director, our clerks, you know, our planning department. So I think it's important that you make sure that, that your staff is also attending those meetings, you know, on a regular basis or, you know, that if they haven't gone one in a couple of years, maybe it's time to resend them. Maybe you could look at that. But I know a couple are coming up in December. So maybe you could see if there's a, a room to send them. So, and that's, that's basically it.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, that was a, a good ceremony today with signing our names. That was definitely unique. Was putting that capstone on the, on the last iron piece for the, the police station. Looking forward to getting that done and hopefully under budget. AB one forty-seven was signed by the governor to collect sales tax on goods sold in California by internet companies. So I mentioned that earlier in the year. It's, it's happening. And hopefully the, our city will start collecting sales tax from, from, you know, internet-based companies that are selling to residents and selling. Because, you know, retail's just getting pulverized, physical locations by the internet. And we definitely need to recapture that sales tax because people are buying just as much or more. They're just buying in a different way now and the city needs to find a way and the state does to, to capture that revenue, to keep these public services that we need going. I want to say thank you to Chief Dick for getting on the news, coming in on a Sunday night under bad circumstances. Appreciate you representing the, the city and glad that the kids are okay. Councilmember Garrett and I spoke to the third grade at Jackson School about government and, you know, they were interested in the parks and abolishing homework and doing things like that. They're really, they were, they're awesome. They're very attentive and sent great letters and, you know, our, our future is assured with them. I attended that chamber mixer at RPS. I want to say thanks to Public Works for consistently, again, going above and beyond. They're painting the crosswalks downtown, putting the trees in, just makes a pot, you know, and brings out downtown, makes it look nice. And I know you're doing that throughout the whole city. So thank you for, for going above and beyond. I sat on the panel at the Seek Temple with Congressman TJ Cox and Councilman Avalos on Saturday to discuss major ag issues to the, that are of huge concern to the Seek community and of huge concern to all of the, the rest of the communities as well. So that was a real honor. And to finish, the Tejano and country music concert was a real success on Saturday night. Pioneer Village looked really good. I mean, it's just, it looks better and better every year. If we could get maybe a few more restrooms and some more lighting, it'd look even better. But, you know, I, I didn't hear a single complaint about it that, that night. You know, it was, it went really well. And we had people coming back, you know, every year for seven years, the, the same people in, in a, in a new group this year. And the people who made it happen were all volunteers. There are people from the community who came out. They either bought a ticket or they volunteered or they, you know, sang on the stage. And it was just very nice to have a community event like that to benefit the animal shelter and American Cancer Society. And yes, that sexual harassment's very important. We need to look at that. It's a really huge topic. It can lead cities to bankruptcy. So it's very important to, to, to have a good, strong educational background in that and to have courses that, that go over something garbage like that because we really need to root that out of our city and all cities and all departments. I think it's very important to focus on that because it's a huge area of liability. And with that, say thank you. And last item on oral communications. Does anybody have anything to say?
I make a motion to buy you all laptops if you want them. There's a workers comp claim coming, carrying all that, all the weight. Rose Robertson, ten fifty-seven Mill Street. I just want to say again, thank you to everybody who volunteered. They're starting to realize the time I, we all, the same people that help out, the citizens of Selma are starting to show up just to help in the morning. That, that was amazing. We had about twenty-five people with input. So I, I was happy to see that there was a, a commissioner there from the Parks and Recs and I kind of send them all over there. And I kind of had a little bit, gave them, gave them a little bit of an update on how the funding works and how you got to go to Parks and Recs first and then maybe, you know, go to the Pioneer Commission to, you know, give them the input. There's some other things that'd be nice that we could do to that park. So it's, it's, it's brightening up a little bit more. I'm concerned of the fact that, it's nice that they, Scott, Mayor Robertson, Councilmember Garrett, and a few other of us walked through the night before the event and it was pretty dark, actually Thursday night, it was pretty dark. We had some lights added up to make it a little, a little more lighter in areas where the bathrooms were going to go. And we had definitely more bathrooms. As we were leaving, locking the door, we had about twenty-five high school students that were asking to be let in because they were going to be having the rally there in, on Wednesday. So I'm a little bit concerned of the fact that you guys are going to, that the city's going to be having a whole lot of, not only kids for the rally, probably a whole lot of other people. And I, I don't think the lighting's really lit for, for all these people. I don't know what kind of rally you guys are going to be having for the first time. A little bit concerned of the fact that, that it, it's just really dark. I, I hope that maybe somebody can talk with the high school and get extra lighting, you know, the lighting's, I don't know what you guys are going to do about parking. I don't know who, you know, what this rally's all about. But I believe the rally's Wednesday, the end of the month?
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth. Maybe just, just follow up with the school. Maybe you guys could get some funding out of the school to put some cafe lights that can stay up for everybody's event, maybe for something. I, I'm just concerned about that. It, it's really dark. The kids were looking around and I, we hadn't put the lights up yet for our event. And when we put the, about six additional strings of the cafe lights, it brightened it up a little bit more. But those lights we did take down. So again, maybe if you guys could follow up with the school and you guys could get together on that because I don't know, again, I don't know what you guys are having there and a little bit concerned with the kids and whoever's attending. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jose, Jose Acosta, ten seventy Mill Street. Just a question. The roadway between on Golden State or Witten between Highland and Floral and the roadway on Floral between McCall and Wright Street, would that be fixed or repaired, repaved in the not too distant future?
Right. So that's the Golden State Corridor project, forty-six million.